For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, February 19, 2018. I'll call the order, please.
Hess. Johnson. Nielsen. Noack. Walagora.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, special session of February 1, 2018, regular session of February 5, 2018, and closed session of February 5, 2018. Any issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time this evening that you'll be allowed to address council.
Good evening. Most of you know me as Penny Fowler. I'm at 1224 for a quick drive. This Wednesday is going to be a memorial vigil planned to come together, we're planning to come together as a community, trying to remember and honor all this and celebrate the lives of the seventeen students that were lost. This will be a very quiet remembrance and tribute to these children and adults that lost their lives senselessly and to show support for their grieving family and friends in Parkville. Far too many children have lost their lives while they were thought, while we thought they were tucked away in their classrooms safely. We can honor all of them as we reflect that evening. This vigil will take place on Wednesday, that's this coming Wednesday, between 5:00 PM and 5:30 PM in the front oval of Alpena High School. Please come and spend some time with us to remember, whether it was thirty minutes, whether you can spare thirty minutes or whether you can spare three minutes, it's very important. Also, there will be an organization meeting. It's being planned to help this community come together to assure that we keep our children safe. This small group is working with a group from Sandy Hook, and we hope to partner with local resources also. Please watch for announcements of a meeting time and place. In the meantime, you can familiarize yourself with these tried and trusted programs and initiatives at www.sandyhookpromised.org. And what is the Sandy Hook Promise? Well, as I quoted from the website, "The Sandy Hook Promise is a national nonprofit organization founded and led by several family members whose loved ones were killed in the Sandy Hook School shootings in 2012. Based in Newton, Connecticut, our intent is to honor all victims of gun violence by turning our tragedy into a moment of transformation by providing programs and practices that protect children and prevent the self-sensitively tragic loss of life." So please watch for a time and place in the future. We hope to get that out through the media and through Facebook and whatever sources we can get to. The small group is me, my husband, my daughter, and her husband, Amanda Curry Bacon. And you can email us at felleran@bacon@gmail.com. Thank you.
Tonight's consent agenda, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $382,885.50, and B is the Michael Pulaski Memorial Run 5K new event on September 22, 2018.
Johnson. Nielsen. Noack. Walagora. And Hess.
Let's get down to a report of officers. We have A, City Treasurer's Quarterly Financial Report of October 1, 2017 to December 31, 2017.
All right. So as of 12/31/17, we are halfway through our fiscal year. Our revenues are at 65% of the budget and expenses at 51.74%, so that's pretty spot-on for expenses. Looking at the revenue expenditures by department, we've only received 1.94% of the budgeted revenue for parks and rec. This is state grant money for the splash park that hasn't been received yet and most likely won't be received until next fiscal year. Also, we've only received 38% of budgeted revenue for the police department, and this is because we haven't received grant money from the USDA for outfitting a new police car. This money is expected to be received within this fiscal year. Moving down to the expenditures by department, the Building Authority Fund is at 86.51% of budget for expenditures. I believe Karen had already addressed this in the last quarter report, and it was due to paying debt early in the fiscal year, and we only have, we only have an interest payment that is yet to be expensed in this fiscal year. If you go to page two of that report with the cash balances and investments, you'll see that the water fund has a negative balance, and this is due to the timing of paying for projects completed in the summer, and also because two quarters haven't been billed yet for water, and we do expect to, we do expect to be positive at fiscal year end.
Is it, I'm assuming it's just the typical grant money coming in, like this isn't anything that's out of the ordinary that we haven't seen before?
Right. I don't think so.
Are you talking about water?
No. The grants that were...
Oh, no. Yeah. Because that, for the DNR grant, which is the one that, with the parks for the splash pad, and that, that project won't be completed until July, probably, into June, July. So funding, you know, we won't get that money until probably August, September, by the time the grants are closed out and everything else.
Thank you, Hannah.
Do you need a receipt and file?
Yeah. Receipt and file unless anybody's got other questions.
Nielsen. Noack. Walagora. Hess. And Johnson.
Okay, again, Hannah. Next up is the City Manager's State of the City Address.
Everybody's waiting. I'll preface this by saying, I would like to have this start out as fourscore and seven years ago, because I know we'd be done in two and a half to three minutes. Unfortunately, there are going to be multiple Gettysburg addresses in this, but there is an awful lot to be said regarding the city and where we've been, where we're going. So I think it is pertinent, even though I am trying to do a slightly reduced digestion version. So if there's anything for those, some details or things being left out, it is in written. The hard copy is on our webpage. At least it's in the packet right now. I don't know if it's anywhere else at this time, but it will be up on the webpage. So we will begin. As I prepared this, my third annual State of the City Address, I realized that both this past year of 2017 and the current one of 2018 were in our beginning, the beginning of real change, both for the community and city government. For some, change can be frightening, or at the very least, something that makes you uncomfortable. For others, it is seen as an opportunity and a new adventure for the young. Although I am certainly not a spring chicken, I hope that I lean toward the latter. We are most definitely seeing change, and in this edition of my State of the City, I will focus on our accomplishments, but also changes within our community, our city government, and our state government and their impact on us. As a general statement, the city continues to maintain a strong fiscal posture as we move into 2018. Upon the completion of the last fiscal year, we did see our fund balance drop from a 33% fund balance down to 27%. However, this was a conscious decision through the undertaking of several long-delayed capital projects, most notably some street projects, which do often entail moving of funds out of the general fund into the street, but also especially on our city buildings, where we are doing long put-off upgrades and maintenance on those. This can be done and was done utilizing a portion of our healthy fund balance while still providing an effective cushion against unforeseen events. Our overall economic picture is, for the most part, bright and continuing to improve, but not necessarily at the same rate as it did last year. In 2017, property assessed values in residential and commercial climbed 6.4%, while industry stayed flat. According to our assessor, what we're projecting for 2018 is a residential rate of a little over 2.5% increase, 1.5%, oh, excuse me, yes, for residential, 1.5% for commercial, and again, industrial remaining flat. What has become really a broken record, that even though these numbers are encouraging that we're moving upward, the one thing that is not moving as fast are the taxable value changes, and this is, which is the lifeblood of local government funding, but it's lagging behind primarily due to headly and especially proposalary limitations. Since taxable values can only increase either the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less, those rates of inflation over the last probably decade have been very, very low. I think we even had one year of negative. So it means, even though those property values could drop 5, 10, 20%, they can't climb back as quickly as they, they went down, and that severely hampers not only us, but all local governments, except a very few who, who were able to weather the storm of property values drop better than some others. Also, on a broader economic note, the, the, the Alpena, when I say Alpena here, I'm really talking about the county, continues to rank very highly on statistics from the Region 3 Small Business Development Center Activity Report, which covers eight counties in northeast lower Michigan and, and in the eastern upper peninsula. The various rankings that they give, we, we either increase their head or own in all of them, except one where we dropped from number one to number two. So that bodes very well for us. Within the city, we have had our ups and downs, both in our economic and community development efforts, but in general, we are always moving forward. It's important to note that we are beginning to see this activity spread beyond the downtown to all areas of the city. So on the upside, I'm going to quickly go through most of the list that's included in my address. We've had the completion and the opening of that new Holiday Inn Express Hotel downtown this past June. We have had the relocation of the Thunder Bay Winery's wine production operations from north of town to downtown, right across the street here, in the building next to the Memorial Hall, which now puts both their retail and their production facilities and operations in the downtown. Completion of the $1 million expansion remodeling of the Thunder Bay Chrysler Jeep Dodge, boy, that's easy to say, dealership on Chisholm Street, and, and almost directly across from there, we have the completion of six new residential units on the upper floor of the old St. Vincent de Paul Building, and the owner of that building, Dennis Schultz, relocated a number of his business operations to the first floor, which creates business activity there on that corridor. One of the big events started yet last year, and we hope will, will come to fruition this year, is the approval by the Planning Commission and Council of the development of one of the largest commercial buildings to be developed in the city in many years, that being a four-story, 58,000-square-foot Northland Community Credit Union Headquarters on Bagley Street. Right now, plans are being reviewed. I understand at least parts, if not all of the project, are out to bid, and it should begin construction here either in the spring or very early summer. So that will be a major plus for the community. Also, the sale of the parking lot by ECC that's at the corner of Wilson Street and Johnson, and some additional vacant land that will be the home of a 40-plus, now I gotta read it because I forgot what it was, assisted living facility, which will be a major boost to the community. We do have one such facility now, a turning book, and this will add to, from everything I've heard, is an ongoing and continuing need in our community. We've had the dedication of public sculptures on the, along our bike path this past fall, and a committee that's been formed is planning on the construction, or the, the, the making or the creation of 12 new sculptures in the next 10 years, most of which will also be along the bike path. And as a longtime proponent of public art and its value to the community, I'm excited to see this project move forward. As our city engineer can attest, I've had that in the CIP every year, and we never budget for it, and so it's great to see other groups stepping forward in here. We've also had installation, new bypass signage throughout our city with the help of a grant from NEMCOG. The city engineering department has completed numerous water and street, water sewer and street projects throughout the city, and that includes the rehabilitation of the Second Avenue Drawbridge. We've had, we are finally going to be able to see work on our US-23 North property with a permit that we received from the DEQ. We will be extending water sewer and roadway into our US-23 North property over the wetlands, which will now open up that rear portion for development. We've actually had a conversation with a, an interested party in a, in a parcel of land back there contingent upon us getting these improvements made, which should be done before the end of this fiscal year or shortly thereafter, and this will be our best opportunity to finally have an opportunity to see some development on this land after we've had it since, I think, the early 2000s. Fundraising for the new splash park at Starlight Beach is continuing, is, will be wrapping up this spring, and the whole project, which includes a grant the city received from the MDNR, will be under construction this spring. They looked at proposals for the splash pad itself today, and the committee has narrowed down which ones that they want to go with. Bids are due, I believe, at the end of this month, and probably will be going before council the second meeting in March. I don't know if you'll be able to get it for the first, but probably the second meeting. That, the goal is to have the grand opening of the splash pad in early July, so we shall see. Hopefully, that will come to fruition. The completion of, the conversion of the Carter Street to Two Way, the redoing of parking on River Street were completed, and with some bumps in the road, no pun intended, regarding the people adjusting to those changes, they have worked out well. Obviously, our, the conversion of Second Avenue to Two Way did not go through. However, staff has been and has prepared a conceptual plan to increase parking on the two blocks of Second Avenue downtown, which we'll be presenting to the DDA and then the council later, probably during the summer. And if approved, it's likely that that would probably occur after Labor Day, those changes in the markings, if that is approved. We've also utilized our ground field authority, we continue to use that, especially our remediation fund. We assisted two properties, one on Ford, one on Washington Avenue, and by performing the necessary environmental activities, we're, we helped to facilitate the sale of one of the properties to, which allows a business to continue to operate under new ownership, and the other is vacant land on Washington that may in the future, or at least it will permit for a possible expansion of an adjacent building, business in the future. All told, these projects and a few I missed and didn't list equate to approximately $40 million in public and private expenditures this past year, this year, and probably continuing on into early part of 2019. That is an impressive figure, both in volume and value, that is often not fully realized or appreciated by those of us inside and outside government. In addition, on the longer term, Alpena Community College and Mid-Michigan Center Alpena have announced major projects with their operations. ACC, the renovation of Van Lier Hall, and a major addition to the medical center. So those two will add greatly to our, to our economy and to our, our community. The one thing I didn't include in the report, and that was an oversight on my part, and I wish to apologize to our building department for it, because of all these projects, the vast majority of them, their success and long-term durability rely on and are due in a large part to the efforts of the city building department, that review the plans, inspect the projects to ensure they are built, and then later maintained, as we do with our rental programs, properly well into the future. In 2017 alone, to give you an idea, the department with two, our two, Don and Mike, inspected, had 2,400 building and zoning inspections, 1,250 code enforcement inspections, and 1,600 residential rental compliance inspections. That's over 5,000 inspections in the course of however many, you know, working days we have in a year. It is impressive what they have done. Each year brings new opportunities for economic and community development to our city, and I don't see this changing in the next few years, should be very exciting. Now, I gave you a lot of the ups. Now, we did have a few challenges, again, bumps in the road that always are there, but we always find a way to overcome and make ourselves even better. So I've got just a couple of those. One being the former APC property. Since that building was demolished here in the downtown, two, almost two years ago, the process of finding a developer for that site has proven to be a little tougher enough to crack than initially planned. However, Jim Clary, his head of Target assures me, and I certainly believe him because I know the effort he is putting in, and that Adam has also put in on the city's behalf, that within the near future, there will be a project that we can all be proud of on that North Riverfront Park is one that is not only a challenge that has come up physically and affected more than one project, but it is one of those that, when I talked about the, our nice fund balance, to be able to still withstand unforeseen events, no sooner did the fiscal year start, and we had that unforeseen event, and that was the collapse of the sidewalk and boardwalk at North Riverfront Park. It was compounded, the tragedy of it was compounded by the fact that since it was, the cause was determined to be water-related under our insurance policy, there is no coverage. And so the entire cost will have to be borne by the city. Staff did work with, came up with a restoration plan, and came up with a cost which is in the neighborhood of $270,000 to $275,000. That was presented to council with a recommendation that it is not something that we could simply not do. Council concurred, and that will come out of this year's fund balance. So that is why I have directed our departments to be very prudent in their spending for the balance of this fiscal year, because we are going to start, or when we get done, we will already have a negative $270,000-plus dollar balance. That project, we are looking to have done roughly by, hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, unless it does take a little longer, because that one directly impacted another project, which was supposed to have been done last summer, but didn't make it. That was the, the city's first dog park, which, because of the collapse, we had to delay that, because that area where the park, the dog park's going is where equipment and probably materials are going to be stored, where equipment had to move to help remove the damaged boardwalk and sidewalk area. So what we are looking at is that project is still a go, and it will happen, and all the fundraising efforts by the community, and especially those led by the group that initiated this whole grassroots project, will occur hopefully sometime in July, once the boardwalk is replaced. And as we're speaking of collapses, then we had, we waited a few more months, and in October, we had another major collapse. This time due again to weather and cables that were stretched across Chisholm Street Park that went into the facade and also held up the fish mural. That pulled away, pulling away, I would estimate probably 40% of the facade and 40% of the mural. After the initial shock, and I could say a fair amount, you know, there's always the finger pointing, who's to blame? The people of our community very quickly began to simply ask, how can we help to restore the mural? Unfortunately, right now, we have to wait for the insurance companies to finish their discussions as to who is going to probably pay the majority, if not all of that. There are multiple ones involved. I have not heard to date that that's been resolved, but once it is, I know Art in the Loft, I've been told, has already been in contact with the artist, and that there will be, the hope of mural will be restored, restored along with, obviously, the facade of the building, hopefully sooner rather than later. The last one to talk about is one, I'm not going to be as long as what's in the report, because everybody is well aware of the Michakewas trials and tribulations that we went through over the last year or so. Since we approved our master plan for Michakewas and Starlight Beach back in '04, our focus has been on Starlight Beach, and it was a decision of staff to recommend the council that once the splash pad and the associated improvements are done this year, that next we must focus on Star, or Michakewas, as basically very little has been done over that 14-year period. We also knew, or at least I did, that included in that plan was an alternate for an RV park in a portion of Michakewas. It's always been contentious, controversial, but it is there, and it was the feeling of staff that we needed, before we decided what we were going to do there, we needed to know whether that was going to be a part of the plan or not. And so I presented actually two years ago in my first State of the City, that with currents of council, we would like to have staff look at it, come up with ideas, present them, so that council could decide, one, whether it's feasible, two, whether it's an appropriate use in the park. It was contentious, it took us longer than we had planned, but I think it was the right process. We got the information the council that they needed, we also got input from the public, and ultimately, the council decided not to move forward. Whether we did or we didn't, staff also knew that we had to relook at the Michakewas park plan. It was 14 years old. Was it still viable? Was it still the appropriate, the activities that were proposed back then, would be still appropriate today? So we will be probably in the fall looking at some of a design shret. We don't know if we're going to handle it in-house or contract it out, where we can get the input from staff, from council, from planning commission, from the Recreation Advisory Board, and, and the public. And if there are to be modifications, we get those made so that we can then move forward with that here in the next year or two of beginning that process of reworking Michakewas. Together, all these different projects paint a picture of economic, cultural, and social strength, growth, and optimism for our community. Our successes, our setbacks, our controversies, and how we handle them define who we are as a community. In my mind, the picture and definition... In my mind, the picture and definition bode well for the future of Alpena. It's citizens, businesses, cultural institutions, and everyone who strives to make Alpena better. We're always having ups and downs, but our overall progress has been one and forward momentum, and I don't see any reason for that to change. Now, looking at a lot of these projects, I've mentioned in a few cases that civic and outside groups that have participated, and that is a major and key element with our community, not only our city, but at the broader community as well. And that's what I call community activism and involvement. That really tells a lot about a community. For me, it says an awful lot of positive about us. And so I'm going to try to go through very quickly a list, and I know we have, I've forgotten, a number of probably projects that individuals, organizations, businesses have participated in, and I want to apologize upfront, and they'll be thanked as well as those that I mentioned. We still have many individuals who adopt a park, either an entire park or a part of a park, and do maintenance, and also on our city streets. The Alpena Garden Club continues to maintain the gardens at Water Tower Park and the Rock Garden by the covered bridge, the Island Park. The Kiwanis Club and the Booster Club implemented this past year the Avenue of Flags on Washington Avenue. They just recently got approval by council to expand a modified form of that along Chisholm Street. On a smaller scale, but just as importantly, the installation of a wheelchair swing next to the pavilion at Starlight Beach by the Lions Club, and the addition of a handicap swing by Rotary to its previously donated playground equipment at Starlight Beach. Of course, it's continual fundraising, which is going to be in the neighborhood of 230, 240,000 dollars towards a splash pad, and they are still, and they are already beginning, and I say "they," it's me too, because I am a member of Rotary, we are looking at, what do we do next? So they're always looking at that. We've had donation of time and materials by businesses, business people such as Doug Pratt, both at the Chisholm Street Park for the landscaping, which is another delayed project now, because until the mural is restored, and also at Colican Plaza, working with Councilwoman Johnson, where they have adopted that park, have made some maintenance and physical improvements, and will be working with the city over the next few years for additional ones. We mentioned the groups involved with the dog park, the fish mural. We also have those involved with the public sculpture. We have an interest in a group which I mentioned last year, tried an ice rink on State Avenue, the weather didn't cooperate, but they still have a very strong interest in an outdoor rink. I'm not sure if the weather's, the way it's been over the years, are going to cooperate, but they are willing and have taken, are now taking the time to develop a business plan that could help the city in possibly reestablishing the ice skating rink at Mischakewas. We'll see how that works out, and also how it works into the plan for the new master plan for the park as well. The Lake Huron Discovery Tour was another rousing success. However, I think it was so big that it just simply got too difficult to manage and organize and coordinate all the volunteers. It may not be moving forward, but we're sure that groups such as McNeese and others will be doing other types of events similar, whether they're on as big a scale or just here in Alpena, and once again, wherever we can help, I'm sure we will. And as, the last one, well, the last couple I mentioned is the DDA Chili Chowder Cook-Off, which really exploded this year, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but they moved it on the Second Avenue, and the, both the participation and the attendance by the public were greatly increased over what they had been in previous years. So that's really a neat thing. And finally, going outside the city, I do want to still commend the South Bay Taking Pride in Alpena Group, that continues to work very hard in upgrading US 23 South in the township. This is our southern gateway, so what they do does have an impact on us. Now, I'm going out of order for those of you who may have the report, so I'll tell you, I'm jumping to page 15, because I don't like the order that I had written in. I've mentioned a lot of different projects, and a lot of those, they have included direct or indirect participation by the city. The city does continue to partner with neighboring communities on joint efforts that benefit our region, while also implementing projects that are internal to the city, all with the purpose of enhancing the quality of life for the city's region, cities and regions, residents, visitors, and businesses. Now, I've got just a couple of those. One is an ongoing project that started in 2016 with approval of council. We entered into an agreement with Presqueo Township, the fire department, to help them reestablish their District Two Fire EMS department, which had been in demise for a number of years. This has been done through the mentoring of the, of our AFD, and helping the township to get that off the ground, and in the first two years, it's been very highly successful, the progress that's made. They've got 18 volunteers, have been recruited, trained, equipped, with much of that training and mentoring by AFD staff, also with the assistance of the Thunder Bay Area Fighter-Fires Association. Equipment's been purchased, and they have already in 2017 been responding to emergency calls, usually, always being mentored with participants from our fire department, generally either the chief or the deputy chief. In our last year coming up of this agreement, the focus will be on developing leaders so that the department can function as a standalone entity. Chief Orbush is very confident that this will happen within the year, or a little more than a year. Residents and businesses in the area are already seeing benefits and are pleased, and I think this really shows intergovernmental cooperation at its best, in one community, in this case, the city, and our fire department coming to the service and helping another community get theirs established. Another even bigger governmental coordination and cooperation project is the Camp Grayling CRTC Joint Land Use Study. This is a study that's undertaken by the federal government jointly across the country. They've done many of these with the local communities adjacent to or within an impact sphere of the military installations. This is being overseen by NIMCOG, and the purpose of it is to promote and enhance civilian and military communication and collaboration, serve as a catalyst to sustain the military mission, promote public health, safety, quality of life, and promote the sustainment and enhancement of continuing community and economic development of the Northeast Michigan region. This study has been underway last year, will be finishing up this year, and a big part of it is to look at things of conflict, opportunities, where things are working between the bases and the surrounding communities. This should provide a blueprint, moving forward for everybody, and it will be especially interesting regarding the CRTC and the surrounding townships, but also the city, which is only a mere five miles away. I am serving on that, the Policy Committee, which is the lead committee for this project, which consists of military personnel, it also consists of federal and state agency representatives, local governmental individuals and business. So it's very broad, far-reaching, and the mayor serves as an alternate. He's attended when I haven't been able to, and Adam Paul serves on their Technical Advisory Committee. So it will be interesting to see the final product, which is then to be presented, I believe, to the various communities once it's done. The last thing is an internal, but for us, it was a very important project, and kind of one for Jeff, and maybe a last hurrah, is that he has been asking, and we finally got funding a few years ago, to do a reappraisal of all our residential buildings in the city that have three units or less. That two-year project was completed last fall. All the information's been entered into our personal database, and it's there for the, those updated figures are there for the first time in decades. The new values will have little effect on the overall citywide residential values, however, the individual properties could see significant swings either up or down. The ultimate goal is for a fairer and more equitable assessment process between properties. Okay, now, for all those watching again, go back to page 11. I'm going to change gears and now talk about city management and our operations. This is going to focus primarily, we'll start with anyways, on a process that began last year. It was one I brought up to council a year ago, when I stated that, as of, I think it was July of last year, 10 of our 15 admin personnel are now eligible for retirement. That tells you how old we are and how long we've been here. It doesn't mean we're all going to hold hands and walk out the door together and say goodbye and good luck, but the process has started, and it's going to continue on over the next several years. It began with the announcement of the retirements of Karen Hebert and Julie Cronjak, our Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director, and Deputy, that they actually did retire and left last month, and Jeff will be following suit come June 1st. In place, because Anna came on board in October of last year, and Leland Rooney, who took over, has taken over the position of Deputy Clerk within the department, spent several months working with Julie, excuse me, under Julie in training. And that's a point that I really want to make. The change that we're going through is inevitable, and I have no doubt for the city, it is a good thing. It is always good to have an infusion over time of new blood, new ideas, coming into any organization, that includes the city. We are losing, and will be losing, many, many years of experience and knowledge, especially within our department heads. I'm not so sure about within the city manager position, but that's okay. And the key for us, and for our, for the operation of the city, is that we have a very smooth transition. And the way we do that is by planning ahead, working with the department heads or the individuals that we know are going to be at some point retiring, getting an idea of a schedule on that, and then budgeting accordingly, so what we can do is what we did in the case with Anna. I guess we did it even with Adam before me, because I was still here, is that you have the current employee there, so that the person coming into the job just doesn't come in cold turkey, but have a period of time where both are there, so the one can mentor the other. That has worked well. We intend to do that, hopefully with Jeff, to get somebody on board so that there is a sufficient period of time before Jeff leaves, and we will be looking at that on down the road.
Yes, very much appreciated.
We do foresee, within the year, probably at least one additional admin retirement, and also some rank-and-file retirements. So again, that process will be an ongoing one, but it will be critical for the city in order to keep things operating smoothly, not only for staff and for the operation of the city from within, but for our constituents and our customers, that they see a seamless change in that as well. We have some made some, or will be making, in proposing some departmental changes. Last, well, last month, I believe it was, the council approved the hiring of another additional firefighter, paramedic. That process is underway right now. Some interviews have taken place, and that was primarily requested because of the overtime issue. That has two negative impacts on the city and the department. One is financial, because overtime is expensive, and within that department, there is a lot of it. But the other is, is it takes a toll on the personnel. It's a stressful job to begin with, and it only adds to the stress when you're putting in long hours of overtime. So we're hoping that this will be, it's not going to be an immediate impact, but over time, that it will be a plus, in both, in both regards. The other is the city police department, which has operated below its effective personnel levels for several years. Joel has come to me, he's asked about getting another patrol officer, and it's always looking at the budget, and it usually gets, you know, that little line through it, and doesn't occur. However, we may have a possible win-win situation. It started with discussions with Joel and Don McMaster from Alpena Community College, and then later myself, where Alpena Community College would like to look to have a professional police presence on campus, at least around 20 hours a week during the main school year. This will be similar to what we've done with the high school, of having a liaison officer, but it will be different, because it won't be a dedicated officer, because this could be looking anywhere from between eight and nine o'clock at night, or eight in the morning till nine at night, and will involve more than one shift, so there'll be multiple officers, not, no more than probably one at a time, but that they, they will be there and performing these duties. When they're not doing that, they can then be working additional duties with the police department that will allow the chief to reinstitute some programs that have gone by the wayside over the years, simply because of manpower issues. We see this as a win-win. It's basically splitting the cost of an officer, and so we're each getting, spending half that, but we're getting an increase of personnel into the city, and helping out the college, which is also within the city and is an area that, as, you know, with Penny, what Penny asked and gave a presentation on today, what we're hearing all too often in the news, I think that presence is important. Also, a final note on, with the management of the city, a major function I have is the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. Not to say one of the most pleasant duties, but it's a very necessary one, and I must say that the relationship between our administrative staff, bargaining team there, and the unions has been very good, very cooperative, very professional. This past year, we completed four successful negotiations of DPW Clerical Police Patrol and Police Command on three-year contracts. And then next year, probably early in the year, we will start negotiations with the fire paramedic unit as well. Now, we are back up to page 17. Although we can be proud of our past and current accomplishments, we cannot rest on these successes. The city continues to face serious challenges in the years ahead, and we will need to set clear priorities to keep moving forward. And these two challenges tend to coalesce around two simple yet complex intertwined issues: revenue consistency or stability, and legacy costs. I'm sure all of you have heard these over and over. You're probably tired of them, as most of us are, but they are not going to be going away anytime soon. In today's governmental world, these are and will continue to be the driving forces dictating how the city will function and provide the necessary services, infrastructure, and community amenities in the years ahead. Many of the challenges we face sound familiar, it may sound like a broken record, but they will continue to exert a strong influence over our decision-making for the foreseeable Regarding revenue, we were really talking tax base. I mentioned before what the problem we have with falling tax base and taxable values not recouping at the same rate that they've fallen, especially as a result of the Great Recession of the mid and late 2000s. This is an ongoing issue. It affects not just us, but many communities. Michigan Municipal League has been leading a multi-year initiative to educate both the governor's office and the legislature regarding what they, but it really is a dysfunctional local government revenue system in the state of Michigan. And I do believe they're making some headway, with the legislature is taking notice, and MML continues its efforts. However, the legislative focus tends to be leaning most heavily on general cross-containment and and control of legacy costs. These are important, but revenue is also. It's really like a three-legged stool, and all three really need to be addressed if we're going to have any real inroads into these issues. As long as they are not, we're going to have to continue to be very diligent, both with our budgeting, and then our implementation of our budgets. That's where the department heads come into play very heavily, as well as Anna, and then of course, myself. And we will continue to do that, to try to maintain as strong a fiscal position as we can for the city. Legacy costs really center around two things: a defined benefit pension, which is a very old system created when the charter was established for the city, in the most recent charter, and I think it was 1944, thereabouts. And also, what are called, and I never get it right, so I'll read it, other post-employment benefits, which generally are our retiree health insurance. We have done a really good job as a city and with the unions, working together to stabilize our defined benefit pension program. Because of actions that were taken over the last 10 years, it is in good, sound financial shape. Some people may say it's not, when you say it's 75, depending upon the source, we're either 75 or 83 percent funded, but that is a position of strength, and certainly compared to many in the state, we are doing well. But our goal is, is to improve that and get it back towards the 100 percent funding level. And we've done, we've taken steps, we still maybe have some more to do, but we are doing that. The other, on the retiree health, really, for years, the city did it as a pay-as-you-go. We would put enough money in the budget to pay the city's required contribution towards retiree health insurance premiums. But that never looked ahead as these costs do increase of trying to cover them. It really becomes less and less sustainable over time, doing it that way. So over the last several years, we have increased those payments to begin to reduce that liability. However, we're a long ways away, we're only about 21 percent funded, and most communities are probably anywhere from 20 to 40 percent funded. So we're right where pretty much everybody else is. The thing that's going to change all of this, and really begin to make things more interesting, I'm not sure if that's in a positive or a negative way, but in the lame duck session of the last legislature, they passed a number of bills, which were signed by the governor. The main one is Act Number 202 of 2017, which basically requires reporting to the state treasury department on the status of both funding liability and required contributions for any community that has either a defined benefit system and/or a retiree health program, which we do. We have said in our first initial report, and the way the law is set up, that if you don't meet a certain benchmark, that the state can then come in, talk with you, they have a committee, you have input, where you basically have to come up with a plan to show how you're going to begin to put this on the right footing. This year, we should be fine, we're in compliance, but we're going to have to watch this every year, less so with our pension as we are with the retiree health, because it could come back to become a major cost issue for us, to where that impacts other services. So this is something we're going to have to watch very closely. Another issue ongoing is the water and sewer rate litigation with Alpena Township. That will be in trial next week. It's been about three and a half years since we filed litigation. There have been attempts by both sides to do either mediation or talk, get negotiations restarted, but they really haven't been able to bring us to that point of the way we felt there was an agreement that was likely. Some of that, I think, especially of late, is because some of the information from each side's experts, that influence and kind of set some base parameters for negotiations, really weren't available to just very recently. And as a result, we suddenly are looking at a very short timeframe, even when we were looking at whether we could start negotiations six weeks ago, that when you have such a short timeframe and are trying to both negotiate and prepare for litigation, you simply can't do both. And so, in the end, we know we're going to be in negotiations once litigation is over. My hope is that whatever decision comes out of that, there will be parameters, at least some parameters, established by the court, that we can then both sides use to hopefully get us to an agreement. It's one that we need, we need, there are a lot better things both of us can do, and so even though I don't think anybody wanted it to get to the point of the actual litigation and trial, I think now it can be very beneficial to both sides. As we move forward for the coming year, and I am actually getting near the end, the priorities that I see are, one, an ongoing review of city operations, and I think I've pretty much discussed that before, especially as we're going to have changes in our staffing, we need to be constantly looking at job descriptions, operations of departments, as we move forward, and that we'll continue to do. Another one that is out there, and is probably going to be there for quite a while too, is medical marijuana facilities, and the potential for recreational marijuana as well, possibly after November of this year. The city did establish a committee to look at the law, which allows for a number of facilities that a community can allow. After doing their research, taking input, their conclusion was that we should simply wait and see. Don't do anything, don't allow them in at this point in time, but not necessarily closing the door. What we want to see is the emergency rules established by the state for the operation of the program, and the impact of the various medical marijuana facilities on the communities that have already agreed to opt in and do this, to see what those are. The thing is, what we've been told is that even though they were accepting applications, I think as the beginning of the year, early in January, or was it December, I'm not sure which, the first licenses are not expected to be issued until about mid-year. And it'll probably be at least six months, I would assume, maybe it could be less, but six months before we start getting any kind of feedback as to their, what the real impact is. So at that point, Adam will bring back the committee, they'll discuss, and then bring back again information to council. But we do believe it's going to be somewhat of a slow process until we get good feedback. I don't think that puts us in any kind of negative position, but it puts us in a position of dealing with a firm knowledge and strength rather than tuning unknowns. We had a signed ordinance that, over two years ago, was declared unconstitutional, unconstitutionally much of it, along with most of those across the country. Our U.S. Supreme Court decided in its infinite wisdom that you can no longer regulate signage by content, which everybody had done to some degree forever. This led to a lot of work by our planning staff, by the Planning Commission, and NIMCOG, who assisted us, to look at our ordinance, untangle and try to pull out the content-related, and come up with an ordinance that was basically content-neutral. They were able to do that, they had a public hearing last week, and that ordinance should be coming to council next month, for your consideration. Couple others, I'm going to leave off, they are in the report, I'm not going to give any details regarding bicycle parking issues downtown and the Hillman State Trail. The last ones I want to comment on are the comprehensive plan, we'll be updating that, that's recorded every five years. We've seen significant changes in the five years since it was last done. That should make for some interesting work by the Planning Commission, our staff, and NIMCOG, who will be working with us, to see if that changes what our plan looks like from what it has in the past. As I said earlier about the US 23 North property, with that infrastructure going in, we're going to have our best opportunity to see development on that long-held acreage. So I have directed, prodded Jim Clarich of Target that this be a priority in 2018, once that's in there, of marketing that property. It would be good to see something happening on it. We have actually had some discussion, but we need to make that concerted effort. Lastly, is one that actually came in, added to the report at the very end, because initially it didn't seem like much of anything, however, it has had its impact within the community. Over the last couple of years, the city has begun changing out, especially our pedestrian lights. They're either low or high-pressure sodium, and what we're looking to do, we have begun converting number of those to LED, for cost savings, because it's a tremendous savings, and also a more consistent light, in a different type of light, going from yellow to white. We've received a lot of compliments, but we've also received some comments to the contrary regarding that lighting, primarily on the intensity of the lights, the effect on the night sky, and some other potential negative impacts. So I've had conversations with officials, strongly suggested and directed, that we develop a policy as we move forward, as we're going to continue these changeouts, because they make sense. But are there other options within the LED lighting framework, where we could use a less intense light, LED light, in certain situations, perhaps at our parks? Also, can we use timers, where some could go off if they aren't needed throughout the night, or even dimmers? Now, the lights we have don't have dimmers, they may not be able to work with timers, we're not necessarily looking to change those that we've already changed. But moving forward, we do want to look at it. We are in urban environment, we're not out in the country without the dark sky sights as we have up at Rockport and the like, but the type of lighting is not necessarily always need or should be the same in our parks, in our residential areas, in our downtown. And so that's something we are going to look at. Now, for what everybody's been waiting for, my closing remarks. I am still amazed, after this, my third state of the city address, with what we as a city and a community have accomplished in the past year. I shouldn't be, but I still am. And 2018 looks to be just as impressive. Again, I would like to thank all those I have included in my address for what they have contributed to our city and community, and to apologize to those involved in projects and programs I have forgotten to mention. It says a great deal about our council, city administrative, and department employees, and above all, the citizens of our city, county, and region, that we continue to move ourselves forward, accomplishing great things that make us an ever better place. We have some big issues looming ahead, but I'm confident we will meet them head-on and see our way through. If there is any shortcoming that we may have, it is that we do not toot our horn enough. When one looks at the sheer volume, both in number and dollars of what we are doing in our community, and community at large, it is impressive to say the least, yet many in our own community and beyond remain unaware. That is a story that we all too often tend not to tell in its entirety, and we should and need to. Despite the challenges we face, the disagreements we may have, we always see a light at the end of the tunnel, finding the new and creative ways of moving us forward. That is a story we're telling, and one we should never tire of saying or hearing. The end.
Thank you, Greg, as always. Definitely a good read and a good listen. For those of you that didn't know that that was going to take so long, thank you for staying. But it is incredibly impressive, I'll keep my comments brief, and that's pretty much all I have, and thank you to staff as well, or you wouldn't have anything to write about.
That's true.
Receipt and file, unless anybody's got any quick comments?
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
All right, next up, communications and petitions. The Huron Humane Society semi-annual report and budget request for 2018-19, and Natalie Francis is here to present that. If you'd like to come, please.
This will breathe right too, compared to what you just had to say.
My name's Natalie Francis, I'm the executive director for the Huron Humane Society, and this is Mary Egan.
Hello.
She's one of our directors, and she's going to give me a hand with the presentation this evening.
And this is my lovely assistant.
Okay, the mission of the Huron Humane Society is to provide no-kill solutions to reduce the number of homeless dogs and cats to education, rehabilitation, and rehoming. Who are we and what do we do? The Huron Humane Society is a private, nonprofit organization dedicated to caring for the homeless dogs and cats of Alpena County. The HHS is organized on a membership basis and is a no-kill shelter. We actively work to heal and rehabilitate the dogs and cats that find themselves temporarily seething in a sanctuary with us. While we receive assistance and work closely with the city of Alpena, the township of Alpena and the county of Alpena, we rely on private donations to keep our doors open. And we are a no-kill shelter, and I always like to just explain what that is. A no-kill shelter is an animal shelter that does not kill healthy or treatable animals, even when the shelter is full, reserving euthanasia for terminally ill animals or those considered dangerous to public safety. So it's not that we don't ever euthanize, we certainly don't keep any aggressive animals at the shelter, we certainly wouldn't want to keep an animal that was very ill at the shelter, we want to focus on health and safety at the Humane Society. Affiliations of the HHS, the HHS is an independent local organization. The HHS does not affiliate with any other Humane Society organizations or with any other animal rights groups, meaning we do not have any affiliations with any of the big groups, at all, United States Humane, Michigan Humane, anything like that. We are independent. The focus of the Humane Society is treatment and placement of dogs and cats. The organization does not take a certain position on hunting our animal rights beyond ensuring the bar. Our operational budget, the Humane Society currently receives approximately 86 percent of its budget from public donation and fundraisers. The remaining 14 percent comes from the city of Alpena, township of Alpena, and the county of Alpena. Our residents, drop-offs, and strays. The dogs and cats at the HHS may be drop-offs, owner surrenders, or strays. Many times, these dogs and cats are not vaccinated or altered when they arrive there. The first responsibility of the Humane Society is to ensure our residents are healthy. If an animal is unvaccinated and/or unaltered, the agency does incur more expenses on that animal's behalf. And this is just a snapshot of 30 days of care at the Humane Society for our cat and kitten. That is usually our, that's our big bulk, is the first 30 days. Actually, the first couple of weeks is the big bulk, but a 30-day breakdown is what I did, and it shows you the vaccinations, what we do as far as worming, rabies, flea treatments, leukemia, heartworm tests, the food, litter, antibiotics if they need them, and then employee wages. So you can see it costs quite a bit to have them 30 days. For a cat, $185.11, and for a kitten, $197.19. And then for a dog and puppy, or dog and puppy, same thing, a 30-day And then for a dog and puppy, or dog and puppy, same thing, a 30-day. They're a little bit more. They need a couple more vaccinations than cats and kittens. And then the same thing, though, we wanted to make sure that they are de-fleamed, their ears are checked, they have a heartworm test done, they're treated for, with Revolution for parasites and fleas. Then the food, the bathing, most of the dogs that come in that need bathing, ears, and then the employee wage, and so the dog is $315.28, and the puppy is $298.78. And then this screen is adoption. What do adoption fees cover, and what were our annual intake and adoption stats? So for kitten and cat adoptions, if you think back on what, you know, caused for the 30 days, and then look down on what we cover for our adoptions, we take care of the feed and the leukemia test, we get, the vets are gracious enough to provide free physical vet exams post-adoption. We also have started taking our animals to the vets pre-adoption as well, just to make sure they're extra healthy. Want to make sure they're healthy when they go out, so then they also, and then they get the post-pre-physical vet exam. Distemper vaccine, hydrantial, which is a wormer, neuter for a male cat, 50, and spay for a female cat. Those are reduced rates that we work with, with the vets, all of the local vets. So a total for a male is $110.06, and a total for a female is $135.06. And right now, we're running $50 for our cats and kittens for adoption rates, so. Puppy and dog adoptions, again, if you look at the prices, all of our dogs and puppies are microchips. That loan is $50. That's a registration as well. Same thing, they're taken to one of the local vets for the pre-physical veterinary exam, and then they get the post. Distemper parvo vaccination, the cowenpaw vaccination, the wormer, neuter or spay, between $100 and $150, and the spay $150 to $200 because it's more for a female, so $201.97, and for female, $250.197. Puppies are $100, and dogs are $75. And this is a snapshot of our 2017 animal intakes and adoptions. You can take a look at that. I won't go through it all. You can see most of our animals are strays. We did have some owner surrenders this year, quite a few more dogs this year than normal due to some people having to relocate. We also help people out by doing some free things for them, such as posting on Facebook. We try to help them that way. Word of mouth, a lot of times I'll take a list of people, list of different kinds of animals that people are looking for, and if I can start networking and try to place them without animals having to come to shelter, I'll do that as well. These are past adoption versus intake stats over the years, this for 2017 through 2012. And then what is new for 2017? This is our Board of Directors, sorry, Board of Directors. We had some changes. Susan Nielsen is our President. Lori Stefan was our former President, and she was there until December. Chelsa Wallace, Vice President, former President, was Rhonda Robbins, and actually, that has changed, Chelsa is no longer with us. Edna Sorensen, Treasurer, and that's changed. Jack Davidson is now our Treasurer. Cindy Johnson is our Secretary and our Vice President. Lori Wilson is a former Secretary. And Mary Egan, you're helping me.
Right.
And then myself. So we've had a little bit of change with our board, which is good. Change is good, which we heard earlier. And Chuck Napski is also one of us, he's one of our Directors. The Building Committee. In 2017, the Building Committee worked to update the shelter to meet the Department of Agriculture's recommendations. It also obtained security cameras, a secure mailbox to move our primary address back to 35-Ton Woodward Avenue, and is in the process of having a new furnace installed. In 2016, it was determined that a new shelter building is overdue. While the Building Committee looks to maintain and improve upon the current shelter, the long-term goal is to achieve a new building that will meet the needs of both our animals and employees. Our outdoor dog runs, which we're very proud of. One of the Building Committee's main projects is the shelter in 2017, where the outdoor dog runs, so dogs can experience more freedom and enjoy the outdoors. Runs are now being used by our residents with only dog runs needing to be added. Dog doors, excuse me, not runs. Sorry about that. We already have the runs, just the doors, which will allow the dogs the ability to move between the indoor and outdoor kennels. And then our bong around dog park. This is something that is really awesome. We have a young man who, named Michael, who is a boy scout. He is actually, this is his Eagle Scout project, and we are fortunate enough for him to be working with us. In September, Michael and his team fenced off an area of the yard for the dog park. Michael has researched the best option for yard cleanup and maintenance, and ultimately decided on Dolomite. He then worked to have Dolomite delivered and leveled off. The final step are the toys. Michael is in the process of ordering the doggy playground equipment, which will allow the dogs to play and to work on agility. So he's just an amazing young man who's working with us at the shelter. And this is the fundraising committee part, and I'm going to let Mary take over here.
I chair the fundraising committee, and at the end of 2016, I think it's important to note that at the end of 2016, the Huron Humane Society found itself in a $50,000 budget deficit. So we also lost our professional fundraiser. So we decided that we needed to really get serious, and we decided that we would have an all-volunteer fundraising committee. And so I was chosen to chair that committee, and really worked hard to cut costs and to maximize what we could make during our fundraisers to climb out of that budget hole. And at the end of 2017, and this has not really been widely reported, but we're very proud of this at the Huron Humane Society, we finished 2017 with a $30,000 budget surplus. So that is an $80,000 swing that this board and our employees and our volunteers have worked very hard to affect. So part of the way that we did that was to build on past fundraisers, like our fur bowl and our mutt run and bark aid, and we also came up with new fundraisers, like the First Annual Home for the Holidays. We were very proud to be able to showcase downtown Alpena and the businesses there, and also downtown living, because a lot of people don't know that that exists. So we were happy to be able to partner with businesses and organizations. We worked with the Downtown Development Authority to pick apartments and really showcase downtown Alpena, and it was a rallying success. We also had a great success with Giving Tuesday. Last year, we made about, I think it was about $1,200, and this year, we really put a strategic plan together and raised over $7,000. We were so proud that, for the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan, we had the most donations. We didn't raise the most, but we had 44 people, as opposed to 22 last year, who gave to us. So we doubled that, and we had the most of any organizations. We're very proud of that. And we also put together our December newsletter. We found great success by doing an every-door direct mailer with that, and that's something that Cindy Johnson, in her political experience, brought to the table, and we ended up raising just vastly more than we had in previous years. So we're pretty proud of that. We used social media to our advantage, and in my job in communications, that's something that I understood was going to be very important. So we decided that we really wanted to make the Facebook page for the Huron Humane Society be about the animals and the activities at the Huron Humane Society. So we decided that it was equally important, though, to get the word out about lost and found animals, because we don't want those animals showing up at the shelters. So the fundraising committee decided that this was really going to impact our ability to fundraise, so we split the two pages. We now have a linked group for lost and found pets. It's been very successful. We worked with Animal Control on that. Michelle Reed was instrumental in helping us make that decision, and it's been really, really successful, and it led to us being able to raise $16,000 in the month of November between Giving Tuesday and Home for the Holidays. So we're proud of that. We also got to showcase a great animal named Howard, by the way, that really tugged at people's heartstrings, and we gave him a second chance on life because of all the people in the community that stepped forward to help. This is kind of a breakdown of our 2016 fundraisers, and then when we went ahead with the fundraising committee in 2017, what we were able to do with all those volunteers. Again, it's an all-volunteer committee. I'm very, very proud of them. They come from across the community, and they really just donated so much time and talent to that committee. And you can see that 2016, we did $40,000 when we took away the expenses. This is what we netted, and this year, we doubled it to about $78,000. So, and all the money from that has not been added into this graphic, so we actually have gone over that. We're very proud of that. So that's the fundraising committee. Retail Boutique is not really part of the fundraising committee, but it is a great upscale resale shop that we opened in downtown Alpena. It's something that our former President Lori Stefan was passionate about and really helped get the idea out there, and then the board took over and really worked with volunteers to make it a success. We loved having a storefront downtown Alpena to add to downtown and also put the Huron Humane Society front and center in the community. The profits raised from Retail Boutique have been put in a special fund, and they go to special things, such as Howard, who I spoke of earlier. Howard was a dog that came in that if he had gone to any other shelter besides a non-kill shelter, which is what the Huron Humane Society is, he would have been put down. He was determined to have severe skin allergies, but also found out that he had terminal skin cancer. We went on our social media pages, and we put his story out there. We did not hide anything. We said Howard is going to need pet hospice care, and we had a great family step forward. We had donors come forward to help with the medical costs, and right now, he has improved. He still has terminal cancer, but he is living his best life, has his own recliner, children who love him, and we're so proud that Retail Boutique was able to give the money to have the biopsy done, which was quite expensive. So thank you to Switzer Veterinary Clinic as well for partnering with us to take care of Howard. Turn it back over to Natalie.
And like Mary said, yeah, Retail's has been wonderful about helping with shelter, and all of the funds that Retail's bringing is, and does go to the shelter and helping out with things with the shelter. We also just had them buy us a wonderful washer and dryer, industrial, so we do a lot of laundry out there, so they've done some head adjustments for the shelter. We just want to thank you, everybody, for your ongoing support because of the community members supporting our mission. Humane Society is able to care for animals until they find their forever home. Life was one of our residents who comes to the home. He is now called Mr. Darcy. He enjoys eating his owner out of house and home, and loves running and playing in fields of snow and cuddling with his sister Bridget. So your ongoing support for the animals currently at the shelter is needed and appreciated. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions for Natalie before she takes off?
I believe.
That's okay?
For Mary, if you have fundraising, we're asking for $18,000.
And that will be, as we go through the budget process?
Yes.
Like we always do?
Yes.
And then presented to council?
Absolutely.
As part of the budget.
There you go. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a receipt filed on that? Probably since it is officially requested.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
All right. Next up, Councilmember Johnson requests a Ford Landfill Authority refund of $919 to the Intergovernmental Recycling Program.
This is the fund for the last few years that the city and the other eight townships buy the people amongst us, and we all give it back to recycling. This year, I would like to tell you all about it. We have an event, besides our cleanup day, we have an electronics day. The city wants to participate in that, so I'm going to make a motion, because we have to pay $100 as a business to be able to do that. So I'm going to make a motion that return over $819 back to recycling, and then a $100 check that we need to pay as a business to be able to utilize recycling, Electronic Day, and any other recycling throughout the year. So it goes there, but it covers our costs.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business is a proposal to relocate Alpena Farmer's Market to Michigues Park. We discussed this last meeting. I asked to have it tabled, just so I could kind of nail it over a little bit more than the amount of time that we had then. Farmer's Market Directors, I'll call you, are here. If anybody has any questions, but they didn't plan on giving any more details than they already had. I don't know if Greg has anything new? I don't think so.
Do you have anything, Adam?
I guess my biggest apprehension, and I discussed this briefly with the Farmer's Market, would be the obvious ongoing project of Michigues Park and what it may become in the future. We certainly don't know what that is now, but Greg had mentioned that that's going to go through the process of revitalizing that document. So a bit of my apprehension would be for us to allow the Farmer's Market to move there, and then it not become part of the plan, and then we're going to be the ones that pull you out up there. I don't specifically see that happening, and I believe that may or may not have even been parts of the current plan. I don't, I didn't read it recently, but, so, and I'm sure you're well aware of that. You just sat through two meetings where we discussed that, so. As long as that's understandable, so I would, I guess, encourage you, if allowed by council, to take a look at some other prospective places in the community, just in the event that that does happen over some course of time. But otherwise, I think, I feel like I was the one at the last meeting that had the most apprehension, but I'm not really sure, so. I'm going to say that I really don't have too much of an issue with it. I'm a little concerned about the grass area, but that was discussed with you as well, so. I'm willing to let it see where it goes, how it works. If anybody else has any other comments? Would like to move? No, I would be happy to inter... I move that we approve the Farmer's Market request to relocate for 2018 summer season to Michigues Park as a result.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Hess?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck with your move. New business tonight, a contract for Wolverine Fireworks Display Incorporated. Chief Borbush is on his way.
It's that time again to renew our contract with the Pyrotechnics Company that puts on the 4th of July fireworks show. There is no city money involved in it, but the city is the licensee that is authorized for the show to happen, so it's up to us to sign the contract. All of the funding for the show is provided through the Chamber of Commerce's fundraising efforts, and Deputy Chief Bob Avery had made contact with them today and confirmed that we're still on track and all is well. This is one of the only times that I've been asking that we not bid. We have had three pyrotechnics companies over We have had three pyrotechnics companies over the years. Two of them have had accidents, one of which caused injuries. This one doesn't have that problem, and in the interest of public safety, we feel it's best just to continue with someone that we know and trust. So that's the purpose tonight. If the council's will, we need to sign the contract and also the post-fare permit, which we'll discuss with them.
I have no issues. No. Thank you.
I mean, I normally, I love to see more, but I think safety comes first, and the chief's company in this company, they have a really proven track record. I'm very, very comfortable.
I spoke with the chamber today, and their support, spoke to the act of this, and they continue their support for Wolverine Fireworks.
Okay. That's good, since they're the ones paying.
Yeah.
I move that we approve a three-year contract with Wolverine Fireworks.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
In fact, the problem that we've had in the past at the main fireworks show, it was not ideal, it's, it could really be lessening, it's sort of after the close APU and AF. We've got firefighters on ATVs, we have police officers on golf carts throughout the park, and that seems to be calming down. Very few Skylanders, very few fireworks on city property where we can't regulate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I move that we adjourn the closed session and discuss what happens here.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Unfinished, unfinished business is a proposal to relocate Alpena Farmer's Market to Mission Cuisines Park. We discussed this last meeting. I asked to have a table, just so I could kind of nail it over a little bit more than the amount of time that we had then. Farmer's Market directors, I'll call you, are here. If anybody has any questions, but they didn't plan on giving any more details than they already had. I don't know if Greg has anything new. I don't think so.
Do you have anything, Adam?
I don't. There's. I guess my biggest apprehension, and I discussed this briefly with the Farmer's Market, would be the obvious ongoing project of Mission Cuisines Park and what it may become in the future. We certainly don't know what that is now, but Greg had mentioned that that's going to go through the process of revitalizing that document, so a bit of my apprehension would be for us to allow the Farmer's Market to move there and then it not become part of the plan, and then we're going to be the ones that pull you out up there. I don't specifically see that happening, and I believe that may or may not have even been parts of the current plan. I don't, I didn't read it recently, but so, and I'm sure you're well aware of that. You just sat through two meetings where we discussed that, so as long as that's understandable.